We're gonna call me in the order. That, or sorry.
I twisted away. Autopilot.
Yeah, no, we don't need an emotion.
Just, we're really well-trained, aren't we?
Yeah, we are.
I actually had to look at the agenda to see if that was next.
Okay, good, I feel better.
No.
Yes.
I think we're all on the same page there, so. Um, we have one item on the agenda tonight, uh, report on the facility use. Assuming that's you, Jeff.
Yep, and as he's coming up, just to remind everybody for context, last time we kinda talked about future school sites, buildings, and so this is kinda the second half of that conversation with future needs, a few parcels, um, where we may want to begin visioning some things to solve, a few things that we're getting now with program expansion, this is like part two.
I'll try my best, so, I'm looking for all kinds of questions and, uh, because we'll go through this fairly quickly if not. So, we get started here, um, what we're gonna talk about today is Career Technical Education Academy, Community Campus Program, and then potential future sites, so, those are the three topics, and we're gonna start with CTE. As most everyone knows, we started the ag program out there, we're currently working on options for, temporary options for both plant growing and animal portions of the project, we're working with the city, and what's, what's available, what we can do and what we can't do, and just know that, uh, the temporary solutions will not be a permanent solution, we need to be thinking of a permanent solution as we move forward and see how this program evolves and, and materializes. So, we've, we've had some discussions on permanent solutions, um, and, uh, through that, the carpentry program actually said they would like to join in with this, um, this solution, and, uh, they'd like to see their facility expanded with some additional storage and restrooms out there at the house building program, so we don't have kids moving in and out all the time. So, apparently that's becoming more of a norm than, and, so I think we could make their, their program more efficient, and if we tie it all together, it could, that's one of the options that we have. Um, turn this off, I hear it beep. So, um, that's part of it, and then, then there's some other options out there with So, potential options, develop a ag carpenter area with the greenhouse, animal areas, I think we have enough room, haven't studied enough to scale, um, if we don't, we may have to, um, Southeast has a portion where that hill drops, that we could carve out a little section if that's needed, um, develop a standalone area for, with greenhouse and animal area out there, um, a lot of, a lot of potential area around there, um, that we could do that offsite, but we also have to pay attention that we're not, uh, encroaching on future areas for shop, if the auto grows, or, or something is at the building, because we have two wings that we master plan growth on, onto CTE, um, when we did the original design. And then the third option would be study offsite options, whether it's a fairgrounds or where we could house something, but there's a big impact, and some of the concerns is, how do we transport kids, how do they go, how do they do classes and back and forth, so, um, those are some of the concerns that, uh, been voiced. So, with that, I've got a couple slides that will show some locations on site, this is the, the complex now, if you look at the white up in that, uh, top, um, right corner, where it's Xed out, that you'd have, uh, potential to expand the, the restrooms complex for storage for both programs, greenhouses would follow, um, to the south, I've looked at sun angles, it looks like it could work really well there, and then we could actually do some, um, outside, um, animal things to the, to the east. Um, one, one good thing here is we have, we're our own, um, neighbors, so Southeast kinda encompasses this, um, so, we don't have a lot of neighbors that we disrupt, uh, when we're planning this, though. Another option would be is to potentially put it on, tie it into the south, south portion of it, uh, if you look at that, that, the block on the, on the main building, that's designed to come out, so eventually this would tie into that existing, um, addition, if, if it ever grew to, to levels that we need an addition for auto or, or whatever, so. That's another potential, you could actually, we own, you see where that street is and that cul-de-sac, we actually own that whole portion all the way to Madison, so it could go anywhere, um, right now, the utilities are right in this location, so this works, if we went up to the north, we'd have to extend the sewer up to that corner to, to do restrooms, the sewer doesn't extend out to that part, but it's capable, I think the slope is there, we, it's not that significant, the water actually loops all the way back there, so, those are kinda some of the options that we have for, for that ag building. So, any questions?
Do we own the property to the west?
Yes, that, that is a district property, that's.
Okay, and how about that little island before the road that goes on Southeast, so that's all, is that kind of all of our footprint there?
Yep, that, that whole footprint is, is ours, that, um, to the east is Southeast, it kinda triangulars, that section, it kinda, the, the road is actually, the property line splits in that top service road, and then it goes straight, then it comes down, so there's, there's some land there that, that we own, it's kind of a triangular piece that comes where that building is.
And it, and speaking about Southeast with their, like, landscape programming and vet tech program, is there some possibility of sharing some of, maybe with the ag classes type of things like that with them, or?
Yep.
There, there is, on, on this, um, I think it's where the four cars are parked, is that the storage area that they've cleaned out, kind of in there where, where our first animal things are gonna go, is that, that little alcove that kinda goes out there?
Yeah, we're, um, we're working on a cold storage area, and we're gonna put a little heater in there.
It's going to be warm.
And we're gonna put some exhaust fans, and it's really separated, so, the pre-cast goes all the way, it's really isolated, and it's gonna be somewhat temporary, it's gonna be, then we'll have to just make sure the, um, manure and things get pumped out on a day.
So, they're starting, I was just out there today, and we have a great classroom full of students, they have a plan for kinda the beginnings of the aquaponics plants, and then the, the animal husbandry with both small and large, but Josh was saying, it's actually a little tougher to get permission to do small animals than large animals because of some sign-offs you have to do, but, um, I think there's some sharing with Southeast, potentially with coursework, but I think for the maintenance and the ongoing care of actual live animals, we'll want that to be on site, and then, there's also some future visioning happening right now, if we go down a pathway for precision ag, if we wanna use any of our grounds for small field plots, or, you know, study of crops and, and irrigation and those kinds of things, so I think we're gonna probably wanna have most of our things centered here, if we get into some of those higher level courses, there may be some crossover with dual credit and some things that they can walk down the street and, and take them there. So, I, I think it's too early to know, but I think those are the courses that would eventually cross over to those higher level ones.
And I was thinking more even facilities, to not just.
Yeah, yeah, and they may be able to, you know, partner with us for some things that are beneficial to them, I think the veterinarian courses would be a really, um, close match and something that they're already talking about with the care of the live animals and, you know, having access to some right down the road, so, it, it could be really cool. Yeah, it's exciting.
I think it's evolving as we're, we're, I'm glad we're not, we haven't just jumped in, that, that it's gonna evolve, and I think they're thinking as they develop this curriculum and program, that they're gonna see some needs that they want, and how to, what to develop, as we design this.
It's nice to have the space.
Put some effort into it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're, they're working on what they can do, and we're looking at a temporary little hut, I mean, it's amazing what I've learned on temporary things with the city, um, through this period, so, we're, uh, we're working together, and I think everybody's working there for the, the betterment of, of that program, so, it's exciting, and there's plenty of space out there to accomplish anything that we can, uh, dream of, really.
Maybe the construction students could build their own building.
Yes, except for they've got two massive houses in the, in the works, one that's bigger than any that they've done before, so, I think, I think they could be part of it. I think there's always the need, as they're working on those big projects, they have some other things that they go and work on, one of them's a big playhouse that's out there right now, but, they are already thinking about those cross pollinating programs, so I, I think if there's possibility, they will, and the proximity is just unreal, I mean, it can't get any better than this. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to community campus. This, this program is currently housed at two locations, in the Western Mall, that's primary, their primary location, I've been there quite some time, and then, we've expanded in Axtel Park the last two years. Uh, would like to consolidate the program to one central location, um, there's some logistics of operating out of two spots, and I, I'm gonna turn it over to Chrissy to really give us a lowdown of the whole program, and, um, people are working now, thinking of what they need and what their future will bring, and it's starting to put the program together, and we have a meeting Thursday to, that I'll be joining them in some of those discussions, so, we, right now, we, we're just kinda plopping a square, where we use a, a square foot, but, that's about double of what they have now, and not knowing what's, what's in that square, so, we're still in that learning process, so, I'll turn it over and, uh.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you, thank you. So, our transition program, thank you, is, uh, for our young adults that are ages eighteen to twenty-one primarily, so, these are students that still qualify, uh, for special education, and so, what we are looking for is, again, a way to consolidate all of our, our programs under one roof, so that we can continue with the fine programming that's happening. So, we have right now nineteen staff, we have fifty-four young adults, um, who are with us right now, and of course, we need a higher staffing ratio because our kids are going all over the community, um, out into job sites and getting that job experience. We currently have four students that are at Life's Gate Pathways that we would, again, hope to be able to bring in-house, um, if we had the appropriate facilities to be able to do that, so bringing kids back into our, our school district. Um, we have three students that are participating in a Strive program, which is a partnership with the community college, so that's been exciting, um, and then, we of course have our, our Project Search students as well, so, so that's where we're at currently, um, and again, the goal would be able to, to have that program in one location so we could differentiate, um, different levels of programming based on the needs of kids, so, questions?
What types of facilities outside of a typical classroom do we currently have for, at either the community campus or at the Axtel Park?
Sure, great question, I think probably one of the main focal areas would be a kitchen area, so looking at kitchen, and then looking at having, um, laundry facilities and a potential apartment, so we could teach some of those life skills, job skills, um, but otherwise, we have kids that are out, um, I, I was at Axtel Park yesterday, and they discovered a new job that the kids could take care of, um, in-house, uh, through, you know, washing some of the, the linens after, after the lunch program, um, as an example, so, they're finding opportunities where they're at, but the key facilities are gonna be those, those life skill preparation places.
Thank you.
Yep. Can you talk just about the reality, kind of, right now, feeling the pinch where they are, and what some of the challenges are?
Yep, absolutely, so, we really are in, um, a tight space, we're really grateful for Axtel Park, that's been a wonderful location, and also the Western Mall location, um, we just proximity-wise at Axtel Park, we have students that are in wheelchairs, and students that need to move because of their needs of their disability, and it's just, um, proximity is difficult, it's challenging, um, we also are trying to navigate spaces in Axtel Park, so we have other students that are moving about the building, um, so we're trying to, you know, coordinate with that, and different levels of need, of course, of all, from all of our students, um, so just transition-wise as well, in the building, we have kids that, in order to get to the library, it just takes time, um, to move students, restroom facilities are not in close proximity, so, when it takes two adults to move with a student, to be able to help them with their daily, daily health needs, um, you know, that just causes some, some challenges there. We also are having to transport kids back and forth, um, between community campus and Axtel Park, in order to meet their programming needs as well, so, just, it just creates some logistical challenges, but, again, we have an amazing team, they're making do with what we have, but, our goal would be able to, you know, expand on that and have those under one roof.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to.
Sure.
So, could we put them in Axtel Park if we changed some of the physical features of them?
So, potentially, that's a, a great question, I think ideally, if we had a, a bigger classroom space where we could do a little bit more in regard to grouping kids, um, it, it just, it's a different setting, uh, when you're working with young adults, and they're really focused on some of those job preparation skills, so if we didn't have some of the, the confines of a smaller classroom, you know, again, to be able to configure the space that we could have a large group of, of our young adults, um, in that sense, so.
So, Jeff, could, can they run two programs like they are now, square footage-wise, if we?
What was that?
Well, I don't know the square footage or how much square footage they need, but could the Axtel complex be?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you've gotta, you, you would have to work with them to see where, what, what's available, there are some spaces available, it's just the logistics of their upstairs, downstairs, there's, it's three levels, moving, you know, moving the kids with one small elevator.
Yeah.
Can be a, you know, logistic, you know, nightmare for, for them, there's some space there, I'm not saying there isn't, um, that'd have to be, that could be a certain part of this study, though, we look at that facility as well, so, um, and I, I think, you know, looking outside of a space or renting a space, just like we're doing now, um, those are all options open, we just have, we have some time, we have a new three-year lease, so we're just wanna get in the head of that and make the right decisions for the program, and make sure we're covered for the future as well.
Yeah, the Axtel Park location is also where we have some current programs that may grow, and I think the future of all of these programs is probably going to be growing and not shrinking, and so, it's where do we have existing space that we wanna commit for the long term, so that we don't have to keep shuffling around, particularly a program like this that needs adaptive spaces for training of different kinds, but also, where do we wanna leave ourselves some wiggle room with some other aspects of programming if we need to expand? And so, all of these are kind of available possibilities, and so it's a good question, that's one existing, and so, why don't you move to the next slides, because we can look then, because what we also have available are still some parcels that are district-owned that are also fair game, when we think about where everything could possibly go, so let's take a look at that, along with.
Okay, some of the options that we've, we've looked at is, develop a new facility south of the instructional plant center, in that field over here, uh, develop a new facility on the old Lincoln Elementary site, so, that would be also an option, um, then steady offsite options, facilities available for, you know, you know, the impact for students and transportation, we, we have to be, we've looked at, when this lease came up, and we resigned our lease, we looked at several sites, you know, you gotta have busing, you gotta have transportation, those are really important needs, and we weren't able to find a site that would be conducive to that, and, also, some of the, some of the warehouses and pieces, you know, you're gonna spend as much remodeling those to, to meet their needs, and then you have a lease on top of that than you would if you built your own place, so, um, we, we were looking at that, that's why we signed the lease and said, let's, give us some time to study this, look at it, and not jump into something that we might regret later, so, that's, that's where we're at right now, so, with that, we've got a couple spots, we, we kinda threw out about a ten thousand square foot block, and that's how it would sit on the site, um, south of here, so it fits nicely, we'd probably put the parking on the north side, you know, where you have that drainage way, we'd probably put the, the storage of that water under the parking lot and tie it into our existing parking, um, and then, as you can see, we're, there'd probably be some better circulation around there to, to the Fortieth Street, so, that, you know, just some of the thinking out loud things, don't know if that's the right size yet or not, but it gives you an idea, there's a little bit of growth, and not knowing what, what the overall site is, so.
And that also, in this location, fits with IPC still being here, knowing that probably some of our special education staff would potentially move into this facility, and then that would buy some time to, for the district grows another three thousand, five thousand kids, twenty years from now, is there still capacity on this site for administrative services to stay here?
And good access for the special ed department to, to just walk over instead of, so.
With us in.
The next one will be Lincoln L. site, you can see how that same ten thousand square foot would fit on there, you could see the parking would have to be incorporated, but there's plenty of room on that site to do a lot of different things, um, program could grow, you could add different programs there, um, you could develop that further, um, so, that's a, that site's a hotly contested site for the community, so, but that's a, that's an opportunity as well, so we own that, um, right now, the, the dark square on the left is the, the community gardens, so. So, we own that right now, the dark square on the left is the community gardens, so.
Yeah, and I think if, you know, we decide that this is a usable parcel for anything the school district already owns it, there's still potential to have it be some version of mixed use, some, you know, benefits even to our, if this was a community campus site, you know, if you had some other things that were beneficial and unique to that program that could be developed, that there's possibilities, but this just gives you scale. I think it's really interesting to look at those two parcels to see what that same footprint looks like, because it looks really tiny on this site, which gives you an idea of the size of that parcel compared to what's over here, and gives you a little bit more scale. But again, just two things that we already own where we could look at more permanent solutions for that program.
Okay, any questions? And there's probably some other options available, you know, like at Axtel Park and that, you know, that field event area and so forth, so a lot of different things to look at. Okay, then the last one is future school sites. We talked about the first one, the site between 26 and 22nd on the Ellis Road and the last one, I think we had a somewhat close thought. We've been out there with the city parks, and they want to partner with us as well for the site in that location, so I think that's, need to move forward with that sometime. And then look at potentially east side elementary school sites if there is a need for that as well. There's very limited land out there, so we'd have to do something fairly quick if we're going to even think of being over there. So, there isn't much land in our district on the east side, so if there's anybody out there, we'd certainly be willing to listen to you.
And these are additional to the ones that were promised within the bond amount? These two elementary sites?
Yeah, or two elementary sites, just elementary sites. So, 10 to 20 acres is what we'd probably look for in the share, depending if the park is going to go with us. If we're adjacent to a park, we'd be more towards a 10-acre site, so. With that, basically, our recommendations is to study the programming needs at the Career Technical Academy, site options and funding for both carpenter and ag programs. I would assume that the carpenter would want to expand even if we located it up in a different location. Then community campus, study the programming needs, which we're currently doing, site options, then funding for the construction and final location of that program, and then the future land acquisition.
And just a reminder to the board, for the ag program right now, we do have some philanthropic dollars that would probably underwrite the facilities that would potentially be built for that program, so just kind of keep that in mind as you're thinking about the big picture of district cost for future acquisitions.
So, with that, just any questions that, or any direction you want to send me on, so.
Any other questions for Jeff?
No, just a follow-up to Mark's comment, and I'm glad, Jeff, that nothing's off the table in terms of other buildings that we might be able to repurpose. For example, when Longfellow was sold to Decodabilities, they were able to put the elevators and what they needed in there to make that usable for that particular population. And I know Prince of Peace, when they did their expansion, they made use of elevators with a population of people that just stairs were not as friendly. In addition to places like Lifescape, they're somewhat landlocked, they are looking to go up. So, in our community, as we just get, you know, more dense, just that we, and you definitely embrace that thinking outside the box and looking at things that maybe we haven't done in the past or that we did in the past that we know we can change, you know, going forward. So, I think Mark brought up a good point of just looking at really all the options, and it's easy sometimes to look at new and building on, but, you know, some of those existing awesome buildings.
Sometimes something's going to hit you and go, ah, this makes really good sense, so.
Yeah.
That's where we're at, we want to get an idea of what their needs are, and then we'll have a better feel for where we need to go.
Yeah, I think an example of that would be Longfellow and what Decodabilities was able to do once they bought that for a dollar, so.
Any other questions, discussion?
Thank you. We have some work to do.
Thank you. All right, we will open it up for public input on facility use. We will close public input on facility use, seeing that there, anyone that might be listening and not watching, there is nobody in the audience that is wishing to provide public input, so close that. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.